One, American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. Tranche One Investment Areas Review and Approval. Like to turn it over to the, to Ms. Angie.
Yes, thank you Chair. So prior to turning this over to Dorian Russell, our ARPA Senior Program Coordinator, I did want to provide a bit of context. We've come before the Board on a few different occasions talking about the investments for Tranche One. The purpose of today's conversation is to weave the threads of those conversations to get together into a full suite of investments for Tranche One. I do want to remind the Board where we've been though, before we get into today's conversation. Our CRF funds that we received last year totaled 104 million. The Board, under the Board's leadership and staff's diligent work, really pleased to say we fully executed on investing in those dollars within the Washington County community. Why I feel that's really important framing to this conversation is Tranche One is 58, just over $58 million. So there's, there's a scaling issue here. We still, COVID is still present within our community. We still have public health impacts and we're also looking forward to economic recovery with less funds. And so the community need, the public health need is actually greater than the funds that we have to invest. It is also too important to know these are not ongoing funds. Yes, we're able to benefit from Tranche One and Tranche Two investments within Washington County, but after that, those dollars will go away. So we do need to be thoughtful about how we invest and where we invest in these dollars and not commit us, commit ourselves to ongoing operational deficits. So with that, Dorian, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thanks so much, Tanya, for that really important introduction. Good afternoon, Board of County Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Dorian Russell. I'm the Senior Program Coordinator for ARPA efforts here at the county. I do also want to underscore some of Tanya's points in that we have had a great deal of staff learnings from what happened during the CARES Act period and we're carrying forward the learnings, the engagement, lesson learns in that aspect that have helped prepare us for ARPA investment planning. Also, over the last four months, the ARPA Steering Committee, which includes a variety of subject matter experts, department directors, as well as two commissioners, commissioners Catherine Harrington and Jerry Willey, we've been working, doing our best to determine how do we balance both this ongoing pandemic response need with also the desperate desire to move into recovery? So we've done our best here to balance both pandemic response in the face of Delta variant proliferation as well as carefully crafting our programmatic efforts for recovery. And so I'm confident what we have today for our Tranche One funds is the best strategic approach that we have with the information available to date. And also underscore that this is only half of our funding. Next year in mid 2022, we'll get another $58 million and we may be better poised to think about recovery efforts there. But we also continue to lead with saving lives first with investing in pandemic response for the holistic wellness of our community. Next slide, please Clerk Moss. So for today, I'll be reviewing the ARPA investment areas proposed to date, which you have seen, and also bring to you consideration for Board action and formal approval of these investment areas and their respective budgets. Next slide, please. A quick reminder on our tentative ARPA schedule. As I mentioned, we are carefully balancing continued response and thoughtful recovery. So you see here, we received Tranche One of funds in spring 2021. We received the second tranche of funds in 2022. We hope to take a very careful, thoughtful, mindful approach into recovery, knowing that we have until the end of 2024 to spend these funds. So we're balancing both the importance and urgency of our recovery, excuse me, response and recovery efforts. Next slide, please. How we got here, as I mentioned, we've had multiple board work sessions. We've had bi-weekly ARPA Steering Committee meetings with our leaders and experts. Staff have done a tremendous amount of research, engagement and learnings from our CARES Act experiences, and we've also heard direct feedback from you all, Board of Commissioners. Next slide, please. Our ARPA investment areas include protecting public health, community stabilization and wellness, stabilizing and supporting the local economy, community engagement, continued operations, and also holding some funding in contingency. Now, previously, a variety of the programmatic investments underneath community stabilization and wellness, we've presented to you underneath protecting public health, knowing that these things are so deeply interconnected and interrelated. For the sake of clarity in this presentation, I've separated out community stabilization and wellness programs separate from protecting public health. And we're, the programs I'll present to you in protecting public health are those that are directly combating the virus as opposed to combating the negative effects of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So protecting public health investments here, surviving COVID-19, $31.5 million. That's going to isolation and quarantine support, vaccination, testing and community education. So things that are directly preventing the virus and also making sure that we're responding to COVID cases as they happen. For meeting basic needs, $3.6 million. This is basic supplies for families that are impacted directly by the virus as well as wraparound services for households that are in isolation and quarantine.
Dorian, before, before we move on to the next slide, I do want to mention we were hopeful when the ARPA legislation was, was originally released that we would be seeing more direct federal and state dollars into these investments. We are not seeing that landscape at this point in time and so feel confident that this will be the need in Tranche One.
Thank you so much for mentioning that, Tanya. That is really important to underscore. This $31.5 million that you see is the gap needed after we've applied all other federal funding that is available for these needs. So we're using every other bucket of state and federal funding that we can to address isolation, vaccination, testing and education surrounding combating the pandemic. And after we've already applied all of those other pots of funding, this is what is left and needed to fill with ARPA. Next slide, please. So community stabilization and wellness. This area includes childcare investments at $2.8 million, which includes assessing childcare capacity throughout the county, providing grant programs to new and existing providers, and also developing focused childcare networks that are culturally specific and language specific. We're also investing in behavioral health and family health, knowing that the capacity, the demand for these types of services has dramatically increased. This includes suicide prevention and postvention, homelessness prevention, behavioral health staffing, home infant child and family support, culturally specific nurse staffing and BIPOC prenatal and early childhood support. We're also investing $1.9 million into encampments and we're also investing $2 million into utility bill assistance, specifically a rate payer assistance program for water sewer and stormwater accounts that are past due that will be coordinated by Clean Water Services. Next slide, please. For stabilizing and supporting the local economy. Again, we know so many of these categories that we presented in front of you are so deeply interconnected and intertwined. But those that are focused specifically on business and workforce support go into this category. We recognize that many activities in that previous community stabilization section also help to stabilize the local economy. So in this category, we have small business recovery at $2.5 million, including our business recovery center support and small business and entrepreneurship support programs, including technical assistance and access to capital programs. For workforce development, we have about $2.8 million. This includes targeted job training programs, reskilling programs and wraparound services for low income workers. I also want to call attention to our investment in broadband strategic planning. So this area, this investment area will include planning ahead for larger, long-term strategic investments and really filling in the gaps in our knowledge to make sure that we're making the best investment possible. So this is a preliminary study to help support potential future investments. Next slide, please. For community engagement, we're looking to diversify accessible communications. This means really improving our video streaming skills and content and diversifying the types of social media strategies we have. We're also building community capacity through collaboration with almost half a million dollars. And this includes building out our cross-jurisdictional engagement strategy, working with community-based organizations, providing coaching, outreach materials and related support. We also want to advance data equity, so really looking at the data, the systems and the tools that we'll need to develop strong programs, implement those programs and make sure that we're evaluating all of our ARPA programs effectively. Next slide, please. Operations, we know we need to have nimble and flexible operations as this emergency continues. And this includes all of our pandemic-related needs and operations, so facilities, technology and communications. Next slide, please. Contingency, we've left about $2.7 million left in contingency. Looking ahead before we reach Tranche Two of ARPA funding. And this category could include any additional programmatic efforts that the Board would like to see prior to Tranche Two dispersment. And holding some amount in contingency will likely be a good idea as Delta has shown us the need to be nimble and flexible as we don't know entirely what the next couple of months will bring. Next slide, please. So once again, today's proposed action is to consider adopting these investment areas and the ARPA funding allocations within Tranche One for each of them. I will mention in your committee packet, you received detailed information on each of these investment areas and you also received a one-page summary table of each of these areas and the respected, respective investments. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Commissioners, what questions and comments might you have? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
First of all, thank you Chair and Commissioner Willey for your work. I've been involved in this before and it is not easy to balance. I mean, I understand it's always difficult and you did the best you can. I also understand that this is probably the last amount of money the feds are going to have for us, unless we're going to go deeper in debt. There is, and this is my personal philosophy. There's a lot of programs that they were funding that they last a short period of time and then, you know, there's nothing there to maybe sustain them. One project I think is way underfunded in my mind is the broadband one. And the reason I believe that is I, I know it started out with District Four and maybe some needs out there, but frankly, that's, that's a county-wide issue. And if we're going to have people who are going to be able to find jobs and be competitive in the future, I'm not just saying feed themselves or goodbye in the current, but I'm saying for the future, that's going to have to be beefed up in my mind a whole bunch. Because if you don't have the capacity to compete, the rest of the world does. And in the private sector, I can tell you the competitiveness is getting fierce and it's very interesting on how the technology is being used. So I, I don't know whether to point this at Jerry or the Chair, but if I had my druthers, we'd put about another half million bucks in that broadband so that we could really have it for a lot of people who were trying to bring out of poverty, but they can't stay out if they don't have the resources and the tools available to them. So whoever wants to comment, that, that I'd use some more money.
Well, I'll jump in Chair if that's okay, and then you can certainly follow up. The, the $200,000 that's allocated there is the, the verbiage is countywide. And I think that's really important because that, our plan needs to be countywide. What got me directed towards the rural side of things, of course, was the relationship with COLPAC. And so we're, we're kind of tag teaming that with a couple of other counties. But overall, you're exactly correct. We, we need to have a broadband internet availability for all of the people who live in the county and certainly have it much better and affordable. That's, that's a big plan. I mean, if we just use the city of Hillsborough's investment in this for their city, okay? It was significant when we first looked at it when I was mayor, it was 50-plus million dollars. And so they've been able to work around and roll this out on a much, a little bit of a slower and low-cost initiative, but it's going to take them several years just to roll out that program within the city of Hillsborough. We could emulate something like that in the county. Again, it's really expensive, but I think this is really important. And it is important that, that we do promote this as a county-wide broadband project. And that's going to be our focus.
You, if we, excuse me for interrupting you, but if, let's say we, I understand contingency well. I know everybody has it, but what if we rolled out another half a million bucks out of that contingency and made 700,000 to 200,000 so that you could have a comprehensive plan instead of a little piecemeal? Is that not a good idea? Jerry, tell me.
No, I, I think the $200,000, remember the, the COLPAC consulting for their first kind of a master plan is $125,000, I believe. It was something less than that. We budgeted 125,000. And that was for basically three counties, two and a half, if you want to give, half of Washington County, Columbia County and Clatsop County. Using that same footprint and kind of the same guidelines for what we're trying to study, $200,000 is adequate to get us into that first study. And I think if we look at Tranche Two, remember that we don't have to spend this money before we get Tranche Two. Unspent monies can be carried forward into Tranche Two and we have three and a half years to spend all of this. So being very diligent and I think focused, the first step is that study. And then as we roll through into Tranche Two, I think you'll be able to see that there, there will be more money allocated to that project and it will be more specifically targeted. So it'll be well-spent money on, on the, on the structure that was built in the, in the study that I think is going to get initiated. So stay tuned with that. I think, I hear it. I agree with you. I think we can get there.
And this, we did ask staff, what do you need to complete the study? So they told, they gave us an answer. We gave them the time to research what it would take and this is their answer. We didn't trim their answer to hit any level. We know that presently, previous boards have not invested in developing a county-wide broadband strategic plan. And now we are, we have the benefit of this money to apply to that need. There is information available at various cities as well. So this effort is able to leverage that in a way that perhaps the COLPAC study doesn't have the benefit of that wealth of information to date. So I think this is a sufficient level of funding based upon what our subject matter experts have given us. And they did confer with their city partners as well to make sure that they had a reasonable approach. So, yep. Commissioner Treese, did you have something?
No, I, I was just going to comment about the fact that it was preliminary money. So anyway, but I, I do want to say thank you to both the Chair and Commissioner Willey for the work. I appreciated the briefing that I got ahead of time from Dorian and others. So I'm, I'm comfortable and I, and I, I know what kind of hard work this is. So thank you for what you've done.
Are there any other Commissioner comments or questions at this time?
I have, I will. Small question, Chair Harrington. And that is, I was wondering like, Dorian and Tanya and everybody who worked on this, this looks very well thought and I was out last week, so I wasn't able to get the briefing. But I'll ask here, I'm wondering this table that was put together in terms of the allocation of investment, was there community-based organizations that were consulted to sort of say, you know, here's what we're doing? Are we making the right investments?
Dorian, I'll let you answer that.
Sure. Yes, to a degree. I will say some of these investments in vaccination, in isolation and quarantine, you know, some of these are so directly tied to looking at public health data, our case counts, et cetera. But for the implementation of these programs, especially in public health, we've been looking to the expertise in our COVID-19 racial equity advisory groups that has included dozens of CBOs. I will say for the development of Tranche Two, we are seeking to do a comprehensive community engagement strategy throughout this fall, this winter and this spring, leading up to Tranche Two to better co-create what our pandemic recovery efforts are for Tranche Two. But staff have been hearing throughout the pandemic from all of our community partners, including community partners that assist us in service delivery. Now pivoting to more of a co-creation model and developing pandemic priorities in that way, that's what we're planning to do here forward. But we have been very much in, you know, response rather than recovery mode for a while. And as, as we are able to lean more into recovery, more of that will be co-developed with community. And that's also what part of that community engagement funding area allows us to do for the staff capacity and compensating our partners for their time and making sure that we are developing priorities, not in a vacuum, but based on community values and needs.
And if I may add on to that, relative to community engagement for Tranche Two, we are actively partnering with other direct recipient cities, specifically Beaverton and Hillsborough, in building out a comprehensive community engagement strategy. What we heard through CRF specific to the business grants is that there was fatigue from community and community business and CBOs because there were multiple local governments reaching out to that. So we're trying to be thoughtful about that approach and really approaching community engagement from a partnership perspective. In addition, at a staff level, we are meeting monthly with managers and key ARPA staff within organizations in local governments to see how we can build on each other's efforts and not duplicate at a staff level.
Thank you, Tanya and Dorian, for that answer. I'm very satisfied with your answers. To just follow up and, and I guess sort of pivot back to one of the elements that was mentioned around testing and the funding that's allocated under that. Before I went on vacation, I sent an email about rapid testing and for the, to see if the county, if we're able to buy some of those testing to be available to the community, will that money be qualified under the testing to sort of allocate for that rapid testing purchasing? Or is this completely, something completely different?
Marnie?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Fai and Board. So the, the funds that were requested and allocated for testing do include some test kits, but they were for very specific underserved populations, like the migrant farm population, some of the manufacturing areas where we've had outbreaks and also for just the funds to set up the testing sites and the staffing of the testing sites and those kinds of things. So we did not anticipate or include test kits just for the general population or for businesses in that original request. However, there is some potential. So OHA is prioritizing test kits for schools and school personnel as well as the FQHCs. And, but there is an ability for other organizations through public health to potentially access up to 400 tests per month, which isn't a lot. But I think we'd have, we'd need to have a, a conversation about how we would prioritize that, that limited, because there is a limited supply of tests and staff to initiate all of the, the steps and whether it's obtaining a specimen. Some, some, some of these test kits people can obtain themselves, the laboratory capacity, all of the other pieces. So certainly open to a conversation about how we might utilize those 400 tests. But just understanding that that's our limit at this point.
Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, seeing none, I have a couple of thoughts. I want to compliment staff in carrying forward the Commissioner input from our August 10th work session in shaping this final Tranche One framework. And also for putting together the really great, I think it's six-page write-up that we have with the, the text as well as the table. I, I just appreciate all of the, the nuanced changes that you've made for this information so that it is a very valuable piece, not only to our, our community partners, our local jurisdictional partners, our state representatives, our national delegation in Congress so that they know how we are being diligent in meeting the intentions of the legislation and more importantly, serving the incredible needs here in our community. One question that has really come to my mind over the last couple of weeks as we've all been enduring this Delta variant peak, this Delta variant surge is what I meant to say. The very hopeful opening of our new school academic year and getting kids back into the classroom and into various activities in a safe manner as the state has worked so hard with our schools on the Ready School Safe Schools program. Well, now with the FDA approvals of the vaccinations and further science information, it appears that there is a need for some folks at least to get a booster. And I see that various health compromised folks are getting that booster already. But when I think about how there is, this proposal includes some contingency, I lean into the fact that we're traveling into the unknown. And I'm wondering, perhaps, Marnie, you may know, is there any indication if we're going to have to carry the, the weight of costs to make booster shots available to our communities and/or hosting booster mass vaccination sites or anything of that nature?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I think, yeah, we, we are moving into really the planning and assuring that we give access to the booster to our, to all of our population. And once again, public health will really focus our effort on the more underserved communities, people that it's difficult for them to just, you know, take time off to go to their doctor's office or even maybe to get to a pharmacy sometimes. So we, we will continue to concentrate on assuring access to boosters to that population. The other piece that we anticipate at some point is that two to 12-year-olds will also be author, included in the authorization for vaccination. And so at some point, there'll be that added population as well. The, the one piece that we are receiving pretty adequate funding for is the vaccination. The, the one piece that we are receiving pretty adequate funding for is the vaccination effort. So we are getting funds for that, but we're getting really no funds for the other activities like isolation and quarantine, meeting basic needs, all of those kind of things. So, so that right now, knock on wood, if I had it, but this isn't a wooden desk, we're, we're, we're set pretty good for vaccination funding.
Good. Well, keep practicing the art of the possible.
Thank you.
That's great. Great. All right. Well, thank you again to everyone from staff, from Ms. Angie and Mr. Carr on down, as well as engaging with your peer Diane Tanaguchi-Dennis at Clean Water Services to harness the great knowledge and passion that we have here in our employees to meet the needs of our community and bringing this proposal forward. So with that, Commissioners, I'm asking for a motion to approve the tranche one investment areas within Washington County's ARPA framework. A motion from Commissioner Trese, do we have a, we have a second from Commissioner Rogers? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And for the sake of our community members, we will be having our next Board of Commissioners Town Hall on Saturday, September 18. And we, this topic is the spotlight topic. So folks have the opportunity to hear this presentation again at their convenience, but also to ask questions on this and any other matter. Details are on the county website on the county calendar.